Good evening and welcome to the City of Lowell zoning Board of Appeals for Monday, March 27, 2023. A couple of housekeeping items. If you are in the chambers and you have a phone, please put it on silence, vibrate, or stun. If you have to have a conversation, please take it outside during the course of the meeting so as not to disturb the proceedings. The meeting can be -- you can appear at the meeting joined by a computer tablet or smartphone, also watching on LTC as well as online at www.ltc.org. So, onto -- moving on to the agenda items. On the continued business, we have ZBA 2023-4 variance approval. The applicant is Plymouth Street House Corporation, property located at 30 Plymouth Street. Plymouth Housing Corp -- Plymouth Street House Corporation has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals to demolish the single-family residence and construct a new two-family residence at 30 Plymouth Street. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Council. How are you?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of the Law Offices of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Plymouth Street House Corporation. And with us tonight at Plymouth Street House Corporation is the owner of 30 Plymouth Street. With us tonight is Mark O'Hara of O'Hara Engineering, the engineer for the project, and Joe Lissy, one of the officers of the corporation. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight requesting a variance for lot area per dwelling unit associated with the redevelopment of this property at 30 Plymouth Street, which is located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district. The lot contains about 7,326 square feet of land with an existing home and detached garage on the property. We were originally on the -- this board's agenda for the February 27 meeting. However, the neighbor to the east of the property had some concerns about the grading and landscaping to the east boundary of the property. Through discussions and meeting with the neighbors, we feel we have addressed their concerns, and the revised site plan and landscape plan reflect those concerns. So, the concerns were essentially centered around the grading of the lot, the final -- what the final grading would look like, and the landscaping along the easterly boundary line in the rear of the property. So, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing home and detached garage, which are located on the site, and replace that with a duplex-style structure. Each unit will be three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and contain approximately 3,000 square feet of gross living space. The applicant's proposing sufficient off-street parking. That parking will be by way of tandem parking and will be assigned to each unit. In addition to the application and the narrative, as I mentioned, we included a revised site plan, which includes the zoning chart, the architectural plans, which includes a color rendering of the new structure, the floor plans and elevations of the structure. And as I said, we've also included a revised landscape plan. Pursuant to 5.1 of the city zoning ordinance, the TMU district requires a lot area of 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So, if you're proposing a two-family home, you have a -- you need 8,000 square feet. In this instance, we have 7,326 square feet. We're just slightly short of the lot area per dwelling unit in the TMU district, and that's why we're here tonight, seeking relief for that -- for the lot area per dwelling unit. In review of the DPD staff comments, so comments one through three essentially just outline the proposal, which I just went through. Comment number four mentions the tandem parking spaces are compliant in the TMU district. We are, again, proposing to assign those parking spaces. Comment number five suggests that we provide a landscape, a revised landscape plan. The initial landscape plan just basically showed abreviate around the three lots, three sides of the lot. Not a very well-thought-out landscape plan, so the revised landscape plan goes into pretty good detail. It includes three or four shade trees and a lot of vegetation for screening along the boundary lines. Comment number six speaks to the stormwater. So, Mark has designed a recharge system that we believe is compliant with stormwater. Mark has also reached out to the city's warm stormwater team to get their input, but we're agreeable to any approval tonight being conditioned on stormwater permitting. Comment number seven speaks to the lack of a -- on the initial plan we proposed, there was no walkway leading from the unit to the east of the property, on the east side of the property. So, the revised plot -- the revised site plan shows the walkway coming down the steps and running over to the driveway intersecting with the existing walkway. Comment number eight mentions that the surrounding area includes a variety of multifamily homes, so this property will certainly fit in with the neighborhood. It will, in fact, complement the neighborhood. Comment number nine, DPD, just indicates that they have no concern with our proposal tonight. The neighborhood planning comments, those comments are addressed in the revised landscape plan. I went into that a little bit already. And the engineering comments, not the engineering comments, but stormwater comments indicate that the proposal is subject to stormwater permitting. And again, we're happy to condition any approval on stormwater permitting. We've also reviewed the city engineering comments, and most of those comments deal with construction. The first three comments, we have addressed in the revised site plan. So, at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Mark. Mark will just run through the site plan with you, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. Just state your name.
Good evening. Yes, for the record, Mark O'Hara, O'Hara Engineering, 21 Mansion Drive, Lowell, Mass. It's a single lot, just under 8,000 square feet with an existing house. There isn't a lot of impervious area, relatively speaking, for the size of the lot, so we're reducing the amount of asphalt for the driveway. And even though the building is a larger footprint, we're going to recharge roof runoff. We -- I did speak with Gordon Bergeron from the Stormwater Division and told him, you know, what our limitations, what our challenges were, and I believe we came to an agreement of what we were going to do. We met with the abudders on-site, which I think was really great for us all to meet out there on-site, because there had been some concerns about the elevation difference between the two sites, the abudd and ours. And it's about eight feet, so we're thinking, you know, what could we possibly do? We're looking at big, beefy retaining walls, and then came to, you know, what if we just lowered the site? So, I checked into the soils, make sure that there wasn't going to be any ledge or anything like that, and it just made an awful lot of sense to just bring the site down. It's going to alleviate the pressure on the retaining walls that exist right now. Over time, there's been more and more fill that had been brought onto the site, and the retaining walls have gradually gotten bigger. They're not really constructed the way they should be, so we're going to remove all that material, have a nice three-to-one slope coming from the high side to us. Essentially, it's almost like a level site, drops down about three feet, and we'll be removing the abrevieties and the trees that have really overgrown over the years. And I think Angie Verge, she puts together really good landscape plans, so that plan's before you. I don't think there's really anything else I can mention, other than we did, you know, add the additional details that the city was looking for, with existing utilities, proposed utilities, and so forth. So, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. Appreciate it.
So, ultimately, the minimal relief that we're requesting tonight can be granted without any detriment to the public good. In fact, the addition of an additional unit here, so from one to two, helps the city's lack of housing stock. The units will be more efficient, safe units, and they'll also provide additional real estate tax revenue to the city, so all of which is a benefit to the public, actually. In addition, the relief granted in this instance would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent of the zoning for this district. As I said, the vast majority of the surrounding properties are multifamily properties. This fits into the character of the neighborhood without any detrimental impacts whatsoever. So, for those reasons, we feel we meet the requirements of the variance, issuance of the variance, and we request approval tonight. Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate that presentation. So, right now, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is this just up to your podium, and please state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
My name is David Delory. I live in Francis Town, New Hampshire, Post Office, Box 126.
Thank you.
I'm the National Vice President of Delta Kappa Phi Fraternity Incorporated, seated to my left as the president and the treasurer, and then two members of Beta Chapter, Delta Kappa Phi Fraternity Incorporated. We share a 90-foot property line to the east of this property and about a 30-foot property line to the south of it. We had some concerns. Attorney Geary has outlined all of the concerns. We'd be delighted to see this property developed as it is proposed, and we'd encourage the board to approve of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to wish to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Do you have anybody online? Dylan? No? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Chair recognizes Member Hovey. Member Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I've driven by this property a couple of times. Currently, what is this property used for? I know it's a single-family, three-bedroom house. Is it used?
With occupants in it.
Okay. The reasoning I'm questioning that is, with three bedrooms, single-family, it looks like there's five cars parked in here at all times in the driveway. There's dumpster usage instead of regular city trash. I've gone back through a couple of years, looking at photos, and it's consistently five cars for a three-bedroom, one-family occupancy, but now we're getting four parking spots for six bedrooms in a duplex. Is there any plan to kind of address occupancy and usage?
Well, we -- so, we have the four parking spaces on-site. There's also on-street parking directly in front of this house. You know, my estimation, probably two or three cars. I know that's not considered in the, you know, in the ordinance, but the two dwelling -- two parking spaces per dwelling unit is what is required, and we achieved that. I'm sure some of the occupants will have the ability to park on campus, perhaps, or around campus. So, they will have to, to some degree, if it's overparked, they'll have to figure that out on their own.
No, I understand that, but we have to meet three thresholds. Like you said, we have the hardship, public good, and intent of zoning. I think it meets two easily with hardship and intent. It's a traditional multifamily zone. The public good part is where we run into the parking. Is there any consideration for residential-only parking in front of it, getting tags? The only reason I'm saying that is it's abuts University of Lowell, so parking there is...
Premium.
Pre -- exactly. So, to say, well, there's on-street parking in front of it, realistically, it's going to be a fight to get that on-street parking, and where are we going to put the overflow of, you know, we're going from three bedrooms to six bedrooms, really, in that area. So, if we're already at five cars minimum on an average in front of that, I can't say -- I'm only talking about when I drove by and what I see during past video pictures. It's just kind of, that's my concern. I have a concern on parking and then what that leads to, but not hearing anybody opposed to it, I'm kind of tilting towards, it's not a detriment to the public good, which is really where our standard lies. So, I appreciate the information you've provided, and I'll let the rest of the...
If the applicant has the ability to request the placard in front of the house, they'll certainly do that, and I don't know if you can get one or two with a two-family.
Sure.
But we'll certainly explore that option.
Appreciate it.
I think, you know, for what it's worth, I think that the benefits of the public could definitely outweigh any disadvantages. You know, parking, there's potentially, you know, it could potentially be overparked. That's, you know, that -- students are pretty creative when it comes to the need for parking, so I would imagine they'll solve that problem on their own.
I grew up on the South Campus. I understand, but sometimes it spills over into residential neighborhoods, and that's where the concern comes from.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Chair recognizes Member Briere. Member Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concerns were addressed by Attorney Geary during his presentation. I look very favorably upon this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Chair recognizes the Clerk, Member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just ask a little bit more about the engineering comments about the stormwater. So, you have a plan here that looks like it meets stormwater requirements. So, has there been enough time for the city staff to review the plan? Is that -- or was it just something that was sent over to them recently?
Yeah. We just met on-site last week, the middle of the week, and, you know, I was just brought into this project myself just a couple of weeks ago. So, initially, I said I'd like to speak with someone over in the Stormwater Division, just so that I could get an understanding of what they would be looking for, what can we do. And I proposed to Gordon at the time that we're going to recharge the roof runoff. We're going to meet their standard. And then the difference between the impervious area would be, would essentially meet their one-inch requirement. So, we're reducing an awful lot of this. But to answer your question, I -- we haven't got a full -- we haven't got a comment from the -- from them yet. I don't think they've had enough time to review it. I think we just got the plans into staff on, like, Thursday. But as a condition, I think it wouldn't be an issue, you know? And if they -- if there was something else that we could do to even further, go above and beyond what their requirements are, we're open to that as well.
The four parking spaces aren't going to be contributing to the recharge. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's -- there's really nothing that you can do. It's -- those spaces are going right where they are right now. There's no way to capture that runoff, because it's at the lowest point of the site. There's no storm system to put it into. So, we just minimized the amount of impervious area. Some food for thought, we could look into going with some sort of a porous type of pavement. I'm not a big fan of it. I think we're looking at 20, 40, you know, it's, well, that'd be 20, you know, it's a few hundred square feet of impervious surface, but that's something to consider, you know, grasscrete or something like that.
Aren't the regulations that you're not supposed to be increasing the runoff from the site?
Yeah. Right now, there's a -- if you look at the existing conditions plan, it may be difficult to see, but the pavement goes from the street all the way back to the garage, and then the garage is impervious as well. The entire building has also got, you know, that's impervious, and there's even impervious concrete that goes around the perimeter of the, along with the sidewalks and so forth. So, I think the numbers in here, I show, should have brought my glasses. You can probably read it better than me, but show that there's been a significant reduction in the total impervious area. It's an existing site. If this was a brand-new site, we'd have more flexibility, but you got an abutting property right adjacent to it, you know, that you have to meet those existing grades. So, we're essentially keeping the grades the same, right where the existing driveways, because we really don't have any choice. We can't get that to go back down in an opposite direction to capture that runoff. So, it's really a situation where we do the best that we possibly can do.
And you've actually decreased the amount of driveway area?
Significantly, yes.
And increased the amount of green space on the site by doing that?
Yep. So, there's the landscape, and we're increasing the amount of pervious, and we're reducing the amount of impervious for the site. And again, all of the stormwater that's coming off of the roofs is now being recharged into the ground, whereas right now, it's just coming off the roof and, you know, sheet flowing across the site.
And you're providing three shade trees, which...
Four.
I'm sorry. You're right. There's a cherry tree in the rear of the site. Three pin oaks on the street, though. Street shade trees. Phenomenal. I think that's wonderful. And I think there's minimal relief being sought here. So, I think this meets the criteria in my mind for what a variance is asking for, in my estimation. The relief being asked for, Dylan, isn't for parking relief. I thought when I was hearing Member Hovey talk about the current use of the site needing more than four spaces and the fact that we're doubling the size, the number of the bedrooms, I was thinking of a six-month administrative review to just understand if parking has become an issue over there, but the relief doesn't include parking. Does it make sense for us to consider a six-month administrative review for parking? Because relief is only for lot area for dwelling unit, right?
That's up to the board. I'm not sure what that would accomplish.
Well, they could add two more parking spaces on the site, I think, without too much trouble if they had to, and have triple stack, which doesn't conform, I understand, but would give them more off-street parking, was one thought that I had. So, I guess I'll leave it up to my fellow board members if you think that a six-month administrative review to consider adding two additional off-street parking spaces to mitigate any parking in the neighborhood that might become an issue. But I think this makes a lot of sense, and you satisfy zoning in everything but that lot area, which is a small amount of relief, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair recognizes Member Prokop. Member Prokop, the court floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really like the new landscaping plan. I think it's adding more trees, obviously, you know, something that we need in, you know, throughout the city. And I do think that you do meet the criteria for the relief, as a fellow board member I'm not sure about the parking, but I'll let my fellow members, you know, mention that. I think it's a good project. I think it's something that, and it's the fact that you have your abudders here endorsing your project, I think, you know, says a lot, because as you know, Attorney Geary, I believe in...
Absolutely.
...the neighborhood and people being involved. Yeah. So, I would be in favor of this, but again, I leave it to the members if they think that we should look at parking as a condition, but I'm fine with the way it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George. So, we heard the wishes of the board, Council. I'll say, I mean, I think it's a great project. I appreciate, first and foremost, that you talked to the neighbors, talked to the abudders, and gone over all the concerns that they had, and you seemed to clear that out very well. And I like the new plans, the new landscaping plans and all that. The relief we're seeking is minimal. I think you meet all the criteria for the variance. I understand the concerns of the parking. I have a few of those concerns as well, but we're not dealing with a parking variance. I mean, I'll leave it up to my fellow board members. I don't think of administrative review for a variance that we can't grant. It just doesn't, doesn't, kind of doesn't make sense to me, but I guess more, I understand it's more on the lines of, like, seeing how things are with that instance, but I don't know. What are your thoughts on that?
I just, I don't think it's appropriate, because we're not seeking a parking variance.
Agreed.
It's as simple as that.
Yeah. No, I agree with it. I just, just...
And I'm not sure what the enforcement would be.
Exactly. That's, that's, and we've got to approach that topic a couple of times recently, so... So, I think there was one condition, as far as the stormwater is concerned. The applicant shall obtain stormwater approval from Lowell wastewater. I guess that's, presume your clients are not objectionable to that.
Right. We're happy to condition any approval on the storm, issuance of the stormwater permit.
Okay. So, I think that, just that the one proposed condition that DPD has set forth, I don't know, does anybody else have anything else that they'd like to address? So, if you're in agreement with that condition, then that being said, with nothing further, can I please have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-4 for variances at Plymouth Street House Corporation, 30 Plymouth Street. The variance is for lot area relief, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, with the condition that the applicant shall obtain stormwater approval from LRWWU.
Second. Motion by the Clerk, Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Briere. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Prokop.
Approve with condition.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, Council, you've been approved.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Wish you the best of luck. Looking forward to it. Moving forward on to new business, we don't have any new business. Moving forward on to other business, minutes of approval for approval for March 13, 2023. Any comments, questions, concerns, revision, possible revisions? Hearing none. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 13, 2023.
Second. Have a motion to approve the minutes by the Clerk, Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Hovey. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the meeting minutes for March 13, 2023.
Member McCarthy.
Approve meeting minutes, March 13, 2023.
Member Prokop.
Approve minutes, March 13, 2023.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, minutes for March 13 have been approved. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Anything to bring? Nothing being heard. Can I please have a motion to adjourn?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion to adjourn by Clerk, Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Prokop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. No. Ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.